Okay, thank you for joining us for this evening's January 28th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will start this evening as we do every Board of Education evening with a report of Superintendent Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our January 28th Board of Education meeting. As a reminder, there is no school tomorrow, Wednesday, January 29th, in observance of the Lunar New Year holiday. Lunar New Year is a new holiday for us here in the school district. Governor Kathy Hochul signed legislation in September 2023 mandating school closures to mark the occasion. Last year, the holiday was on a Saturday, so students did not have the day off. Offices are open 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., gung-ha, fett-choy to those who are celebrating. In last week's State of the State address, Governor Hochul mentioned very little about funding for public schools, but she did speak about upcoming announcements with regard to a few items: cell phones in schools, information literacy, agriculture education, and school meal funding. I will certainly keep the board and community informed as I learn more information. All of this will be part of the state budget discussion. Finally, Rye resident, former Westchester County Executive George Latimer, held his ceremonial congressional inauguration event here at Rye High School Performing Arts Center this past Sunday, January 26th. We had 16 students on hand to welcome community members and dignitaries, and our a cappella group, Rhythm on Rye, treated everyone to the National Anthem. Two high school students sang "What a Wonderful World," and two more sang "God Bless America." We were honored to have been chosen to host the community for this important event. A huge thank you to our food service department, technology team, and security and custodial staff who gave up their weekend to make this event possible. I also want to thank our wonderful cab crew: Gabby Pericchio, Kathy Vigiano, Rob Guimigliano, Tracy Barnett, Kaitlin Sasson, John Hawkins, Stacy Falcone, Michelle Campo Reali, and Colleen McGreevy, who all put in countless hours helping to organize the event. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will now move on to presentation and discussion number one, and we will begin with a presentation by our associates from Hazard Young, Etia, and Associates. Please come to the podium.
Oh, that'd be great, Gabby. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sure. That'd be great. Thanks, Karen. Is it working yet?
No.
There we go. Oh, that one. Okay. Can I go backwards? Yeah, just can't get it. Or maybe it's easier with the keyboard. Your keyboard's better. The up and down. You're good? Perfect. Got it. Thanks, Gabby. I appreciate that. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Susan Dynie, an associate with Hazard Young, Etia, and Associates, and this is my colleague.
Hi, I'm Karen Shaw.
And we are thrilled to be here this evening, providing the, providing information regarding the Leadership Profile Report, which we have completed in the district. I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Education, Dr. Byrne, the staff, and the community for welcoming us over the past months as we engaged with all of you as a first step in the process of recruiting Rye's next superintendent. And we want to express, express a very special thank you to Michelle Campo Reali for all of her assistance in scheduling our time with the members of the community and what she did to be behind the scenes to make it a very smooth process. So thank you to Michelle. We appreciate it. A little bit about HYA. HYA is one of the oldest, the largest, most reputable, and experienced search firms in the nation, and HYA has completed over 1,600 searches in the last 35 years and has a network of over 135 associates. My associate Karen and I are your local network associates here in the New York tri-state area, and we conduct, conduct executive searches and work with school boards, superintendents, and districts on a variety of projects, most especially executive searches looking for superintendents of schools. Many teams, like us, are a former superintendent and a former Board of Education member, and I was the former superintendent of the Mount Pleasant Central School District for 10 years prior to having a long career in public education. Now Karen, introduce herself for a minute.
Thank you, and as Sue said, it's been a pleasure being here. Thank you for having us here and opening up your community has been wonderful. So my name is Karen Shaw, as we said, and I was a former Board of Education member in Moorestown, New Jersey, served on the Board of Education for six years. We used HYA in our superintendent search and for our strategic planning. Had such a great experience, I decided I wanted to go help other Boards of Educations and districts help with their next leader, which is so important to students and districts, and Sue and I have been working together, and we have such a great time.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen. The information that we're going to be presenting this evening tells a story about the Rye City School District, and it's based on our engagement with constituents in Rye, your community, as well as the results of a survey that were taken by your community members. The story that we are going to share with you tonight is part of the story that we share with the candidates as we recruit candidates for this important position. Part of the story is qualitative and comes from what we heard in speaking with you and learning more about you and your community and the wonderful Rye City Public Schools. The other part of the story is quantitative and comes from the survey results which have been collected. Since the end of November and early December, Karen and I have met with over 100 individuals in interviews, focus groups, and forums. Each individual member of the Board of Education was interviewed, as well as Dr. Byrne, members of the administrative team, operations team, union leadership, the faculty, staff, and high school students, who are absolutely a joy to meet. We met with school and community groups who are so supportive of education and very much invested in the success of students in Rye. And we held two community forums, one in the morning and in person at Milton Elementary School, that was on January 14th, and a second forum in the evening on January the 15th, and that was via Zoom. And all, and we thank everyone for all of their interactions with us and being part of this process. I keep hitting the wrong button. Here we go. So this table shows a breakdown by category of who we met with as part of the engagement process. So you see there were seven members of the board, the superintendent, 20 members of your administrative team, 31 members of the faculty, 14 support staff members, nine students, 24 members of considered community parents and guardians, for a total of 106 members. When we meet with individuals, we ask everyone the same three questions. There they are on the screen. We ask, how would you describe the strengths of, of the district? What do you see as the greatest challenges facing the district in the next few years? And what characteristics and areas of expertise would you like to see in your next superintendent? These questions help us to learn more about the district's values, areas of growth in the next three to five years as a new superintendent transitions into the district, and provide specific areas of expertise that the district is looking for in its next leader. And we summarized all of the comments and consistent themes that we heard from everyone. So the first one has to do with the strengths of the district. And looking at the strengths, and I won't read them all to you, and this report is going to be made public, so you can take some time to go through it and read them more carefully. But what we heard was that Rye is a district in excellent standing, characterized by academic success, and committed to the success of all students. We heard about the incredible individuals who work in the district from your superintendent, whom we learned has been known to be visible in multiple places at one time, and we really need to know more about how he does that, to the dedicated administrators, faculty, and staff who work in your schools. We heard about the highly engaged parents and community who care deeply about the schools and their students. Operationally, we heard about effective communication, facilities, financial health, well-established systems and policies, and a clearly articulated and recognizable vision and mission. Now, we have a picture of your Rye commitment there, which everyone knew about, which is a feat unto itself, Eric. That's really an accomplishment that everybody knew about. We heard from a wonderful group of high school students who feel supported and enjoy coming to school. They were insightful and delightful to speak with, and so many great ideas came out of that conversation. They were incredibly astute. In general, there is so much pride and a well-deserved reputation in Rye. And importantly, especially for the Board of Education to know, many, many individuals shared with us that they appreciate the work of the Board of Education whom they feel are highly effective and represent their perspectives. Now, the challenges facing the district. So what's on the horizon for the Rye City School District and the incoming superintendent of schools? Well, it's about maintaining the wonderful momentum that has been established, and much of that correlates to building relationships and trust and crafting a roadmap that defines where the district sees itself in the next three to five years. So things that came up, as you can see, balancing academic rigor with student wellness, building trust, fostering relationships with the school community, and continuing a focus on the Rye commitment, developing a long-term roadmap, as I said, for academic success and continuous improvement, ensuring consistent communication across various stakeholders, including guidance, teachers, and the community, expanding extracurricular opportunities to meet the needs of students with varying interests, growing demands in special education and meeting the changing needs of students, implementing new programs and New York State curriculum standards while balancing curriculum priorities within constraints of instructional time, maintaining long-term financial stability, including sustainability, including impacts from the New York State aid package, maintaining and or upgrading facilities in consideration of current bond work, recruiting, hiring, and retaining quality administrators, teachers, and staff, and of course, transitioning to a new superintendent. The last question that had to do with areas of expertise that the district would like to see in its next superintendent is summarized on this particular slide that looks at the characteristics that the, that the community is looking for. All groups consistently spoke about the importance of the next superintendent as someone who is what we call in leadership, a servant leader, someone who is charismatic, who's an instructional leader, and who is an excellent, excellent communicator, as well as a multitude of other characteristics. As you can see, we needed two slides to put everything down there. Well, that's what we heard. Now Karen is going to talk about the next part, which has to do with the survey and what was collected.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
So as the survey, the survey was developed from the Aqua Group, which is a sister company of HYA. It is a research-based survey, and it's based on superintendent leadership standards, addressing both district performance and desired characteristics of superintendent in relation to the areas of vision and values, teaching and learning, community engagement, and management. So you can see, this is who took the survey. The total number was 453 people, which is a great, a great response rate. Definitely the highest, two-thirds of it was parents and guardians with students in the public schools, which are almost 300. The next largest group were the students, which was about 14, almost 15%, were the students, which also is a great turnout. Sometimes we don't get as many students. And then the faculty. So you could see the breakdown of all the different numbers. And thank you for pushing this. I know the board and the district pushed this out a number of times, and we kept seeing the surveys' numbers increase, so thank you for doing that. Oops. It is, it is. So this is in ranked order, what was the top district strengths. Most of them were in the categories of teaching and learning and management. So number one, and this was across all the different demographics that, that were broken down before, district schools are safe, technology is integrated into the classroom, district employs effective teachers, administrators, support staff in its schools, facilities are well-maintained, and district technology infrastructure is sufficient to support the use of technology in the classroom. This is what we heard throughout our conversations as well, so we always like to see that it's good that it links up to what we heard anecdotal, anecdotally, and in our focus groups, the strengths. Moving on to the top-rated characteristics, these contain three of the categories: community engagement, management, vision, and values. Respondents were asked to select three statements that they deem most important in selecting a new superintendent. So number one was recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel throughout the district and its schools, that we also saw a lot in our focus groups and interviews, that was definitely a theme. Demonstrate a deep understanding of educational research, emerging best practices, and implement strategies, which is a vision and value statement, which Dr. Byrne has done a lot of, lot of work here on the staff and the board as well, and that we heard a lot of, we want to continue the momentum, and that really is a characteristic of someone that we're looking to continue the momentum that has been built here. Foster a positive professional climate and mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. Establish a culture of high expectations for all students and personnel, and as Sue said, this Rye City is known for high expectations on supportive students and provide transparent communications. So desired characteristics. So after seeking input from the board, the parents, staff, students, and the community from the focus groups, interviews, and an online survey, the Rye City Board of Education seeks a strong strategic leader who is, and a lot of this Sue has already said in the characteristics, but we combined all of the data together to come up with the desired characteristics, and this is really important for us when we're talking to candidates because we use this as what, what are, is the district looking for, what do they want? And for a person to see this, to say, am I a good fit for the district? So a collaborator who encourages professional development for staff and supports a culture of teamwork, able to navigate parents' expectations and concerns, approachable, empathetic, and skilled in making people feel valued by listening to diverse perspectives and fostering collaborative environment, dedicated to Rye City and its traditions and values, which we've seen very important, and there seems to be a lot of multigenerational families, and even if the person isn't necessarily from Rye or close area, it's very important. We've definitely taken note how important it is to them to learn this, and we will share all of these with the candidates as we meet them. Exceptional communicator, exhibit strong instructional leadership, consistently makes informed strategic decisions, hold others accountable, focuses on the well-being and equitable development of all students, advocates social-emotional support, understands their evolving needs, and is able to adapt and solve problems effectively in a rapidly changing educational landscape. Honest, humble, compassionate, energetic, with the ability to maintain a calm demeanor and a sense of humor in challenging situations. Listens to various perspectives and works effectively with the administrative team, teachers, staff, to foster supportive, inclusive, and growth-oriented environment. Possesses a forward-thinking vision for the district's growth while maintaining high academic standards and momentum. Professional, personable, and maintains a high degree of professional trust. Strong relationship-oriented leader who has a track record of recruiting, hiring, and retaining talented staff. Visible and actively engages the broader school community, including administrators, teachers, staff, students, parents, and community members. Which is a long list, and this sounds like the perfect person, and Sue and I will be looking for as many of these characteristics as we can find in the candidates that we will be talking to. And the successful candidate, these are just certifications they will have to have, certified as a superintendent or capable of gaining certification in New York State. A lot of times, if it is someone from New Jersey, Connecticut, it is reciprocal, but they just have to be capable of earning that. Demonstrate a sincere commitment to the long-term success and well-being of the district, which is really important here. We are hopefully looking for someone that will stay long-term, and that is truly important. So next steps, do you want to? Okay. So we are, actually, we aren't starting recruiting, we have been recruiting. One of the things about HYA is we don't really wait. Once we start some of our interviews and focus groups, we are out on the grounds doing our networking. And for us, and we've said, about 75 to 80% of the people that we recruit are people that we've reached out to ourselves. They didn't put in an application, they're people that we think might be a good fit for Rye City. We make phone calls, we go through our networks, and people who typically make it on our slates, which is what we present, about five to seven candidates to the board, are people that we've reached out to that actually weren't necessarily looking for a job, but we think they'd be a great fit, so we've had conversations with them. So we will be really actively recruiting. The posting is already up. It's through the HYA website, but it is connected to the Rye City, I believe, your superintendent search, is the job link posting? I'm not sure.
I don't believe it is, but we can certainly make sure that happens tomorrow.
Okay, no problem. But it is out there, so it is posting. Application's been coming in. Sue and I have been making phone calls, so hopefully over the next few weeks, we'll really start recruiting and looking through applications, making phone calls, starting our initial interview process over the next few weeks. Then the next part of it will be interviewing, as we've said before. The interviewing will be a confidential interview, which means only the Board of Education will be interviewing, and that is really how we say we get the best candidates that way. Someone who is a great superintendent, assistant superintendent in another district, they are not going to want the word to get out that they might be looking, and that's why we really, really stress confidentiality. So the interviews will be with just the Board of Education. There will be a first round of interviews, I believe, end of February, March-ish, and then there will be a final set of interviews in, in March. Again, we would like the person to take the seat July 1st, as Dr. Byrne is leaving, but hopefully there will be some time to transition and maybe have some days in the district. The announcement would probably come out April, May-ish.
Springtime.
Springtime, springtime. And that is the interviewing process. After that, when the board picks their final candidate, then they will go through negotiations with that candidate and a third-party background check, and hopefully, like we said, by July 1st, someone will be in the seat. Anything I missed?
That's it? Okay. And just again, we want to say thank you to the community and the Board of Education. It really was our pleasure to meet with everyone, and we are very excited, and like Karen said, we've already started recruiting, and we look forward to bringing a wonderful slate of candidates to you to meet. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. When you look at the desired characteristics, it is a long list, but a list of things that I certainly, as a board member, would fully support, and I'm not surprised by anything that's here, and they are big shoes to fill that are being left behind, unfortunately, but this is a great basis and a great jumping-off point for people who are interested in coming to work for the Rye City Schools. I do think if you're using these desired characteristics, it is a good summary of who we are, what we're looking to do as we go forward. And so I'm, I'm really appreciative for the community members who participated and who attended the community forums and filled out the surveys, because as a result, we have a document that will really be able to capture what it is that we need in the next leader for the Rye City Schools, and we're very fortunate to be able to have a document like this that exists. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything. We thank you very much, and we look forward to the next steps ahead. Just for the larger community to be aware, as Sue and Karen had indicated, this Leadership Profile Report will be shared and uploaded to the superintendent search webpage. There will be further communication that will come out from the Board of Education to the community tomorrow morning, which will have the links to the documents and to the presentation. And we will continue to update the school community on the search when and where appropriate. We will certainly be continuing to send out email communications updating the superintendent search page, and we are committed, as we have been from the announcement of Dr. Byrne's retirement, on finding an exceptional leader who will be with us to help lead the Rye City Schools with a consistent focus on excellence, education, guiding us by the Rye commitment. So we thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to presentation and discussion number one by presentation and discussion, presentation two within one. So it's a mouthful. And for that, I turn to Dr. Murray.
Andrew.
No, I turned to Dr. Byrne.
No, you're right.
No, I'll talk to, okay. There was a lot of movement.
Give us one minute.
Oh, it's getting warmer, thankfully. It's chilly.
Okay, good evening. So tonight, we're going to be talking and giving a presentation about the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. As you're all aware, we are going to, this program will begin at our high school this in fall 2025, and so I'm joined here by Andrew Hara, our high school principal, and Cody Blum. He's our IB coordinator, who's been doing a fantastic job getting us ready and making sure that we're ready to launch these courses next fall. So to start us off, I just wanted us to look at these two documents up here. Obviously, we have the Rye commitment. We also have something called the IB learner profile. And the IB learner profile really is, is very important to the IB program because it describes the types of dispositions and characteristics and attributes that they're working to build within students through this program. And these two documents are really together because they complement each other so much. And when you think about the reasons as to, like, what is our why with bringing this program to our school, it's really because there's such strong alignment between the IB learner profile and the Rye commitment. So there's a phrase in the, in the learner profile that says, "The aim of all IB programs is to develop internationally-minded people who, recognizing the common humanity and shared guardianship of the planet, help to create a better and more peaceful world." Which reminds us about the line in our Rye commitment that refers to caring individuals who positively contribute to a diverse global environment, really both emphasizing the importance of human connection and the role that we play within the world. And so that's just such a nice match for us when we look at these two documents. And also, when you look at all of the different attributes, you see those same words within the Rye commitment. Talks about critical thinking and building knowledge and being, and inquiring about the world around you, and these are all skills that we build within our students every day. There's also the piece about being a risk-taker, which is really a creative problem solver and innovator and effective communicator. So you see that, that direct alignment really makes the IB program such a great match for us, but also it will help us build and expand the work that we're doing within the Rye So these are the programs that the IB does offer to schools, and I just wanted to kind of point out that we're doing the diploma program, which is for 11th and 12th graders. And then I also wanted you to see two very brief videos, but what the videos do highlight are these specific qualities of the IB program, and it really kind of brings out the uniqueness of the program. So the first one is about the global perspective that it helps to build within students, and the next one is about the life skills that it builds that students take to college and beyond.
DP learners are global citizens who consider issues from multiple perspectives.
In every class, our teachers would always ask us to think about outside views or worldly views, and this really helped me build at a young age an awareness of the fact that there are people out there that think differently than I do, that act differently, that believe different things, and it really helped me to understand why knowing any of this was important to me and to my knowledge of how the world works and how people are different.
The students don't feel they are just from one country. They are more international-minded, and which makes them feel very easy to get along, and now when we discuss an issue, they will express their opinion with more global perspective.
You get to learn about other cultures. You get to learn from your peers themselves, not only the teacher, and also learn about other people and other things that are around them that they might not be exposed to.
The fact that every class incorporates something that has to do with various cultures and various aspects of the community makes me and has taught me to be more understanding of various types of people in the world around me. And now, when we discuss an issue, they will express their opinion with more global perspective.
You get to learn about other cultures. You get to learn from your peers themselves, not only the teacher, and also learn about other people and other things that are around them that they might not be exposed to.
The fact that every class incorporates something that has to do with various cultures and various aspects of the community makes me and has taught me to be more understanding of various types of people in the world around me.
I talked to students who've been through the IB a lot at our university. We have a lot of them at our university. And almost all of them say that the IB at some point was challenging, that it was certainly not easy, that it often took them beyond their comfort zone. And at the same time, they say that it was one of the most valuable things they ever did. And what we know from talking to these students again and again and again is that they bring with them other kinds of skills. They bring with them a kind of enthusiasm for their subject, a curiosity about the world. But they also are very well organized. They've been used to juggling multiple things during their curriculum in the IB, having the kinds of disposition, skills, knowledge that prepares you to be adaptable, to be engaged, to be curious, and to face challenges when they come along, to surmount them, and to be comfortable with all the kinds of difference that you're going to face in life. That's, I think, what the IB prepares you for.
So those two videos just really highlight for you that the emphasis for the program is really on skills over content. And it's about this perspective that you're able to build an international-mindedness that students really take with them and will take with them once they leave our high school. Okay, so now I'm going to hand it over to Andrew and Cody. They'll talk to you about the profile of an IB student and also give you more details about the program and the requirements and what's to come.
All right, thank you, Tricia. Good evening, everyone. So coming in new this year, I was really excited that we are getting IB off the ground. And as we've been doing that, we've been getting a lot of questions from students, from parents. And one of the most, the most common questions that I've been getting is what makes an IB student? And should I be applying to the IB Diploma Program? I actually just had that conversation at the end of the school day today with a student who's kind of on the fence. And so he asked, you know, what should I do? And I said, I can't make that decision for you. But I will say that, you know, as you can see up here and as you saw in the videos, and the IB Diploma Program is really geared towards students who are interested in thinking on a global scale. And one thing that we've been saying a lot is with AP courses, you know, you learn, it's more content-driven. You're learning the content. You're applying it. At the end, you take an AP test that has multiple-choice questions and an essay in which you're applying that content to a very specific question. With IB, students really are at the center of their learning. And so a lot of it is, we talk about, it's not as much, we want them to think outside the box, but they're also learning outside of the box. And so for this particular student, he kind of heard that term. And he says, I like that. I like the sound of that. And that's something that's exciting for us because we were starting to build our first cohort, every student who's interested in IB. There's not an application process, per se. The process is going to our IB coordinator, Cody Blum, having a conversation, really understand that the Diploma Program is a very rigorous program, but it's also a great program that will really get students to think in a lot of the ways that Dr. Murray was describing through the IB learner profile. In addition to students doing the IB Diploma Program, you can also take courses not being a Diploma Program student. So students starting this week have been making their course selections, beginning the process of making course selections. I've actually been able to see what some of those selections are. They'll be, all students will have at least have a draft of their course request by the end of this week. And we are seeing students who are requesting IB courses that are not necessarily part of the IB Diploma Program. If you go to the next slide, this is the IB Diploma Program model. And it really illustrates the main tenants and components of IB. You'll see that right there in the middle is that IB student profile that Dr. Murray was talking about earlier. And I continue to really be excited by this idea, and Dr. Murray spoke about it, about how the Rye commitment aligns to the learner profile of the International Baccalaureate Program. You'll see that just along, you know, surrounding the IB learner profile, you have that the student is kind of driving the approaches to teaching and the approaches to learning. And Cody will speak in a moment about just the way that the Theory of Knowledge Extended Essay and Creativity Activity Service that circles that is distinct to the Diploma Program. And then in the outer circle, you will see the different subject areas that students are learning under. And then kind of wrapping around all of this, and you saw it in the video, is this idea of international-mindedness, really having our students think about their learning on a global scale.
So in order to earn the IB Diploma, IB requires students to earn 24 out of 45 possible points. Each course that a student enrolls in is, they can earn a maximum of seven points. The courses are divided into SL and HL levels. HL indicating a higher level, SL indicating a standard level. All HL courses are over the course of two years, and they add up approximately to 240 hours of seat time or experience time. And then standard-level courses can be taught over one year or two-year, adding up to 150 hours of experience or seat time. There are certain components that Mr. Hara had mentioned, the TOK, the Theory of Knowledge Extended Essay and CAS components that are also required of Diploma Program students. TOK and the Extended Essay can add an additional up to three points to that 24 points out of 45 in order to earn the Diploma. And the CAS component, the Creativity Activity and Service component, is a mandatory requirement for students in order to receive the Diploma. IB is very clear as well that any incompletion when it comes to Theory of Knowledge Extended Essay or CAS immediately disqualifies a student from earning that Diploma. So it is the foundation of the program. And I'll talk more about that in a couple of moments. I also just want to quickly add about just what Mr. Hara had mentioned about multiple-choice tests. So one of the things that's great about these courses is that IB does not see value in multiple-choice testing in the real world. And I'll talk more about it when we get to the courses. These courses are reflective of the times that we're living in. And all of us can agree that when our boss comes to us and says, "We have a problem. Is it choice A, B, C, or D? And you need to be right." That's not how it works. So a lot of these courses require students to think and to explain and to use evidence to support their claims. There are a series of internal assessments and external assessments that add up or help determine the point score that a student will get. Internal assessments are done within the class. The teacher grades them, and then they are sent out to IB for moderation. And then external assessment operates very similar to what an AP exam would be, is that the student would take it, and it's immediately sent out to IB. And all those factor into the scoring for each course. So IB breaks up their content, their curriculum into groups. It's just a way of differentiating. But each group is really aligned to content areas that a student would typically be studying. Group one would be English. Group two would be world language. Group three would be social studies. Group four is science. Group five is math. And group six is the arts. At the bottom, the DP Core: Theory of Knowledge Creativity Activity and Service and Extended Essay. Before I kind of just talk about the other courses, I want to start with those because, again, that's the foundation of the IB Diploma Program. The Extended Essay, I'll kind of go backwards. The Extended Essay is a two-year process that's done outside of the student's schedule. So they will meet with an advisor. They will come up with a topic that interests them that's aligned to one of the IB courses that's being offered. And they will write over the process of two years a 4,000-word essay that is, uses a variety of different sources to substantiate claims. It really is something that a lot of students, in retrospect, from what I've heard with speaking with other coordinators, once they get to college or university, the Extended Essay is probably one of the most valuable things that they see in preparing them to write and be prepared to write a college or university-level essay. The Creativity Activity and Service component, I think, is, in my opinion, probably the best part of the IB program because it highlights not only who the student is as a learner, but who the student is as a person. So it's essentially a portfolio that will be done also outside of the school day. It's the responsibility of the student to log and reflect on different experiences that they have in the realm of creativity, activity, and service. The good thing that I really like about Creativity Activity and Service or the CAS component is it's really open to what the student wants to do. So you're not kind of pigeon-helded into, okay, so I'm not an athlete, so I can't participate in the activity or reflect on the activity component. It could be, I want to practice running for a marathon. It could be something, I want to, you know, learn how to play tennis. And it allows the student to really challenge themselves in ways that they might not typically have been challenged and reflect on that. Service is how you give back to the community. And that could be done in a variety of ways as well. And creativity is also a pretty interesting component where it could also be, you know, a student who's in the theater program, whether they're behind the stage or on the stage, allowing them to reflect on that process. But also, it allows them to think about challenging themselves in a creative way. So some examples could be, they want to learn how to play guitar, or they want to learn a specific song. And over the course of two years, they will reflect on that and document their progress in challenging themselves in that way. The Theory of Knowledge course is embedded into the Diploma Program student's schedule. It's over the course of two years. Theory of Knowledge is essentially the foundation, and I know I've used that a couple of times, but it's a foundation for all the courses that are listed. So when we draft our curriculum, and there are some samples in a couple of slides, every course that the IB offers has to have a connection to the Theory of Knowledge. And Theory of Knowledge is essentially a course that asks students to think about why we know what we know and how do we actually know that it's the truth. And it is embedded into each aspect of the courses that are listed to allow for students to see that, you know, when it comes to like language, for example, right? How is language universal? How are certain mannerisms? You know, language can be nonverbal as well. How are certain mannerisms universal? How did we come to that conclusion that that mannerism means that thing? Like a thumbs up? So it really asks students to think about how we know what we know and what's universal about it. Each of the courses that are above follow the same internal assessment and external assessment formatting. So regardless of whether they are HL or SL, they will have those internal assessments that are done, that are moderated by IB and the external assessment as well. The last thing I'll say about the courses is that for, in order to earn the IB Diploma, there needs to be a combination of three higher-level courses and three standard-level courses. You could also have a combination of four higher-level courses and two standard-level courses. So I'll just quickly just indicate which courses are HL, SL. So Language and Literature for English, it's the HL level. All the world languages, Latin, French, and Spanish are HL. Abenicio Spanish, which is a fancy way of saying beginner-level Spanish, is at the SL level. Digital Society is at the SL level. Business Management's HL. Environmental Systems and Societies is at the SL level. Computer Science is HL. The two math courses are at the SL level over two years. And Visual Arts and Theater are at the SL level over one year. So we took, part of the IB authorization process is that we do have to all complete curriculum maps outlining that we understand the philosophy and the tenets of IB, and also to show the IB authorization team that we are embedding and participating in creating a class and a course that really highlights student-centered learning. So this is an example from the Lang &amp; Lit curriculum map, the English class. I really want to focus more so on the assessments because, again, that's what really is, that IB is all about. So that first point right there, students participating in Socratic seminars. The student, just like Mr. Hara had said when we looked at the model, the student is at the center of the learning, and the student is the one that's really driving the learning in the class. You also see that there's a lot of voice and choice when it comes to IB. So that second piece, they can select from a variety of modes, including a fictional narrative, personal narrative, or informational narrative? I'm sorry, informational article or scripted podcast. And the last thing I just want to just add to is that every course does have that international lens to allow for students to see connections, not only just within the United States, but across the board. One thing I didn't mention about the last, with the last slide, but it's important to note, is that all of these courses are audited by IB every five to seven years to make sure that the curriculum is reflective of the time that we're living in. So the next slide with Digital Society is actually a perfect example of that. So when we started this process, Digital Society was "Information Technology in a Global Society," was the title of the course. And when we started that, it was really kind of being phased out in the sense because it just wasn't really relevant to the times. When we started looking at Digital Society, and the ultimate reason we picked it is that how reflective it is of the times that we're living in. So a lot of the new units that were added were AI, data mining, algorithms. So really looking at the world today through a digital lens. This course snippet also highlights the importance of the research component. So every course does have some aspect of researching, providing evidence, and creating a narrative[1527.27] a narrative, or whether in the World Language courses, speaking it, to really support a claim. So again, we picked this one in particular because if we think of the unit Algorithms and Computers, I mean, on face value, it really does sound like, wow, how jazzy. But when you look at the unit itself, it's really looking at how algorithms can be used to create echo chambers, going back to Theory of Knowledge, how algorithms can be used to prevent knowledge, or from, prevent you from learning knowledge or accessing knowledge. So again, we're seeing that what these courses are, they're reflective of the challenges and issues that we're facing today.
I'm just going to take a step back for a moment and acknowledge that we have Mr. Bloom here as our IB coordinator and how fortunate we are. In just a few minutes, you heard from him, the amount of time, knowledge, and talk about someone giving a problem, right? Not a multiple choice problem, but a problem in bringing IB into a school that already has 23 AP offerings, already has the Academy, and trying to figure out how IB fits into all this. Mr. Bloom has just done an absolutely phenomenal job. So as we talk about the communication piece, because we have, we've had to message this, both to students, to families. So, you know, the first bullet point there is we called it, you know, Cody's Roadshow. Mr. Bloom went from, to all of the 10th grade classrooms, his IB Roadshow, went to every 10th grade classroom and spoke to all the 10th graders initially of just what is the IB diploma program? And just what is IB, you know, as a whole, kind of what we, we started this presentation with. So the 10th graders were exposed to what IB was. And then, we also had various information sessions for students who wanted more information for them to go to meet with Mr. Bloom at, during Community Lunch to find out more about the program. Mr. Bloom has then had dozens of individual meetings with students who were interested, telling them more, not just about the diploma program, but about individual courses that they might be interested in taking as one-off courses, not as part of the diploma program. Maybe to your surprise, or not to your surprise, I looked today at the course requests and the most, the highest selected course was the IB Business Management course. Already, we're only halfway through course selections, and we already have over 50 students who are interested in taking that course next year as just a one-off. We had various faculty meetings where we were communicating exactly what IB is going to look like. There are a lot of questions from faculty. The, the faculty members who have been getting trained in IB, they're excited, they're ready to go. Those who haven't are kind of thinking, what is going to happen? You know, what's going to happen to the other courses? All of the other courses are still there. If you go into the course catalog, that was just released earlier last week, that, all of those courses, all of the AP courses, the same offerings are still there. There were, then, after a few counseling info sessions, we had requests from parents for more information about these different program offerings, including IB. So we had two night presentations for 10th grade students because, 10th grade families, those are the families and the students who are going to have to make a decision next year of whether they're going to go into the diploma program. They also could be making a decision to apply for the Academy. And so those were two programs that we discussed in those parent information sessions. Then we received feedback from the 10th grade parent sessions where they said, this would have been great to know in ninth grade as well. So we set up a ninth grade parent information session that we had earlier this month, in early January, to get the ninth grade parents, give them some information, and students, so they can start looking ahead and thinking about their choices when they enter 10th grade. And lastly, there's been a lot of communication through the parent organization, both in my meetings with the parent organization executive board, as well as meetings, parent organization meetings, open to all of the parents at Rye High School. If we go to the next slide, this is just an information sheet that was distributed at those info sessions. It's also made its way into the course catalog. I think it's a really nice, simple summary of all of our programs, our diploma designations. But the two programs that do get, do get described in this document are the Academy and the IB diploma program. Really, what is it, who's it for, how is it designed, and what is the workload? That is the most common question that we do get asked. What does it look like? How much homework will I get, right? What does the workload look like? So that gets answered through this information sheet as well. One of the final questions that we gave, and one of the ways that we tried to communicate at our info sessions, we tried, we essentially gave student profiles to the parents. So we said, we gave them a sample student. So if you look at Student A here, they really enjoy doing group projects, and while the student hasn't had to do many presentations, they'd like to learn how to hone their skills in that area. Student A is also interested in making more connections with their peers and within the larger Rye community. It goes on to explain more, and we said, this would be a student who'd really be, you know, the Academy would be a good choice for them. But then we went to Student B, and we said, Student B likes to think on a global scale, they're a self-motivated learner, they think deeply about topics, and try to understand how ideas and knowledge are interconnected, they like to write, there is a lot of writing in, in the IB program, and want to be able to do projects outside of their coursework that apply to their interests. And in addition, they believe that being bilingual will help them further their goals. That is a perfect candidate for the IB program. So we, we, and then Student C, we kind of described as someone who was, a student who's a little bit more flexible. You know, they want, they have various interests and want to be able to select courses based on workload, and which classes their friends are taking, because that is oftentimes something that they are interested in. And so that Student C, we said, would be perfect for taking a range of courses, including AP, and maybe one IB course, because that is also an option for them. Finally, just the impact on staffing. I mentioned a moment ago, we have a, already a large number of students, even if they're not part of the diploma program, who are interested in taking, in this case, the Business Management IB course, but they're already also requesting other IB courses. Because of the high demand, particularly for Business Management, we do recognize that there's a need for an additional social studies teacher. So that is a request that has been, and put in, and something we know that we will need. And we also recognize that in introducing IB Computer Science, we will also need an additional Computer Science teacher to be able to continue the offerings of the, the basic level Computer Science, the Essentials courses, as well as the AP courses as well.
And I'd just like to interject, we will go deeper into the staffing implications in the budget processes. As Mr. Hara mentioned, students are, they will have a better idea of specific numbers of sections and students toward the end of this week, and that will actually be information that we incorporate into the budget presentation at the next board meeting. And while we go through that scheduling process, as you know, we always do, we make modifications based on actual needs. So you will hear more detail on the staffing implications, and whether it's one completely full Social Studies teacher, or maybe it's a little less, or a little more, and what those implications are across the balance of the positions in the school. So there's much more to come with that as we go through the budget process.
And then, just wanted to go over where we are in the process. Applying to be an IB school is a quite lengthy process, takes about 18 months. So we've been working on this for quite some time. We're at step number five, so we're requesting, we're, we're putting in a request for authorization. And then, after they receive that, they have a verification visit, and we'll have that in the, in the spring, then with the decision to authorize. And then, even when you are approved to be an IB school, I think as Cody mentioned, every five years, we do get a visit as well to make sure that the program is, is running as it should be. Okay, so we'll take any questions or have a discussion?
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I think this is a, it's very timely, but it's also very well presented. I've had the great fortune of, of hearing it multiple times along the continuum from fall to winter, as I have a 10th grade student, so I've been fortunate to be able to hear it. And I think you've done a nice job really summarizing a lot of the most salient points, and I think that direct connection between the IB learner profile and the statement in the Rye commitment really is a nice way to bridge and to show how bringing an academic experience and opportunity like this for our students does really tie in nicely to the work that we're doing. Are there questions or comments from the board?
So, really more of a comment, but you, Eric sort of addressed the, the questions I had a little bit, I know it'll come later, about the staffing impacts and, and hearing some of the data about where you're seeing the signups is very helpful in understanding what, where that might pan out at the end, and, so thank you for that. I, I just, the comment I want to make is really, because I, while I don't have a 10th grader, I have had the opportunity of sitting through Curriculum Council, talking about the IB program, and being a part of other presentations that talk about it, and I just, I, I really appreciate the, the process that you all went through in order to get to, to the place where we're able to identify ways kids can help differentiate this. Because not just a few months ago, when we talked about this in Curriculum Council, it was, the students that were there were trying to figure it out. And so, it was, it's so telling that at each juncture, you listened to the questions, you took in the information, and you helped it inform, how can we continue to do this so we're helping people understand this at the best, in the best way that helps them? And, and I think that's, you know, communication is a very difficult thing to do a lot of times, and to do it effectively is really challenging, and, and so I just wanted to really compliment all of you on doing that throughout this process. Because it's not an easy thing to adapt and have to change and have to shift, but it makes such a huge difference when students and families are really trying to sift through, what does this really mean, and how, what am I going to get out of it, and is this the right choice for me? So, I really appreciate that. To piggyback on that, not to, but, what I will say is, I think the course descriptions in the course catalog have really been a wonderful opportunity for families to be able to sit down, as my 10th grader and I talk about, what are the things that you're interested in, in learning about and doing? And, and one of the things that's been really great is to be able to sit down to say, okay, well, here are all your math options, and here's another option. And to have that conversation, Matt, huh, well, actually, that sounds like a really interesting way to think about math, and, and I only talk about that because it's one of the ones we've talked about. But because it, it provides a different way to, to access content that for some students is more engaging and more interesting than another way. There is no better way, one is not better than the other, it's just different, because we're different people and we think differently. And so I think it's a really great opportunity as well to be able to have those options for kids.
Tom, I didn't want to do.
For the language and like math in specific, like, the IB tracks for that and the existing tracks, I mean, are they, they line up, are they separate, do they conflict, do they blend together? Like, how does that work?
It's a great question. I'm going to speak to the World Language component, I'm going to have Mr. Bloom speak to the, to the math component. So, we are offering, if we go back to the slide that has the offerings for, in the World Language category, you'll notice that we are offering, there are three languages that are offered, Spanish, French, and Latin. There are two languages that are offered at Rye High School that are not being offered through the diploma program. One is American Sign Language, ASL, and the other is Mandarin. And so that, the Ab Initio Spanish there, the fancy way of beginner Spanish, it's actually a pretty intense beginner Spanish, where they're covering, you know, a year and a half of what would regularly be a Spanish curriculum in just, in one year. And that would be for an ASL or a Mandarin student who chose to go into the diploma program, because we wanted to make sure there was something offered for them. As far as everything else, World Languages is actually the only subject area where students who would have gone down the track of going to say a Spanish, which you'd say Spanish Six Honors, and their next course might have been AP, now those students who would have gone into Spanish Six Honors are starting with just IB Spanish, right? Year one, and then IB Spanish year two. So the curriculum aligns in a lot of ways. The big shift is actually the assessment in the World Languages. So in speaking to the, the teachers, that's one of the things that they're kind of working with their curriculum and some of the adjustments that they're making.
Are those, I mean, obviously, just the assessments, I mean, like, if someone's following the track of, into Spanish Under Six, is that, is it roughly the same thing? Are they very different?
I think for the World Languages, in the conversations I've had, because, I mean, you mentioned the course catalog. I hope we don't have to spend this many hours next year going through the course catalog together with all the department coordinators. There was a tremendous amount of time that had to go in to norming around what the department coordinators' understandings were of these courses, the counselors, school counselors' understanding of the courses, so that they could message this to the students. So I was able to have time with each of the department coordinators, and I would actually say the World Languages was the most aligned as far as the, it's, it's the least variation from what it was. And so when I talk to them, they're saying, it's a lot of the same, we're teaching a lot of the same concepts, a lot of the activities are similar, a lot of the lessons are similar for those courses, but the assessment is different because it's really, you know, they're not taking multiple choice questions as they would on an AP Spanish or an AP French exam. So that is part of the adjustment, and I think that's going to start, even though in the teachers' minds, maybe they're saying, oh, these are small adjustments, I think even preparing them for that assessment, right? They're now having the students engage in activities where they're applying the languages differently, right? Not just trying for understanding and checking off A, B, C, or D, right? But really trying to figure out how to apply that, speak it, hear it. So that's where I think we're going to see a lot of the changes. I hope that answered the question.
Okay, it does, very good. I'll give you the curveball question now.
Sure.
From where you did. So you covered off the kid who starts in middle school, keeps the same language in high school, and, you know, then can go the Track Six or the IB.
Sure.
And the kid who may have done Mandarin or Sign Language and wants to shift in. Now, what, I understand you can do one in middle school and then start with another in high school. Where does that kid fall with the IB?
That's where we're at right now. They would, they, if they were in a situation like that, right, and they started, they would have to probably take the Ab Initio Spanish course, right? Because there's not anything that lines up with that track. And so, that's the only situation that we're seeing right now, where it would be a curveball. But so far, in students who are doing the diploma program, we have not seen any of those scenarios.
Well, that's, and I do want to hear your answer, Matt, but one of my other questions that I was going to get to is, you know, and it's sort of, it's all new for the kids who are in 10th grade now.
Yeah.
But, you know, as we get forward a year or two, those questions would be, what are things that if there's kids who think, hmm, maybe I might want to do this when I'm in 11th grade, are there things they should be or need to be thinking about in ninth grade or 10th grade? This might be one of them, if they were thinking of making that shift, but are there other sort of categories or areas?
Do you want to answer that one? I have some thoughts. I, I mean, I would say that the, the course offerings are set up so that any student coming from 10th grade, maybe barring that one situation you just described, should be able to select a group of courses in the diploma program that align with what they've already taken, right? So the, you know, for the Language and Lit, any student, no matter what level of English, you know, English nine, English 10, whether honors, not honors, they should be able to progress to, to Lang and Lit for IB, right? The Digital Society courses, Business Management, there's no prerequisite for those. The Environmental Systems and Societies, no prerequisites for those. The math courses.
Computer Science. The Computer Science, you might want to think about taking, you probably would want to take some Intro to Computer Science courses before that one.
And then, for math, there is a, there's two different types of courses, and that's, I always get these, there's the.
I can, I can do it.
Applications.
So the applications and interpretations, that'd be equivalent to like Algebra II and Precalc, and then Analysis and Approaches would be Precalc and then Calculus. So there's a, so, no matter what pathway you're on for math, you have the option to take an IB course.
And is, and this may not be a thing, but like, if you're talking about a kid who's like, I want to get as far as humanly possible in math in, in Rye, whatever, is Calculus BC or whatever. Like, is that, are you, would you, would you potentially be taking two math classes? Would the IB be less, or would be equivalent, or whatnot? I mean, I don't even know if I'm asking a coherent question.
So the Analysis and Approaches is the equivalent of, the Year Two is an equivalent of a Calc AB.
Correct.
There was an Analysis and Approaches HL course that when we did our research and spoke to other schools, that was actually the equivalent of beyond Calc BC, right? So we ended up making the decision to go with the SL course to make it as accessible as possible for any students who are on that track. I'm, I'm sure it will come, you know, the situation will come where there's going to be a parent who asks that, and that's going to be the math class that they take for those few years. And so that would be, and there's not room in the schedule outside of that to double up with a Calc, you know, a Calc BC. But these math classes, all of these courses are internationally recognized, recognized across the board by colleges. So no one's going to look at someone taking Analysis and Approaches and say, what's wrong with them, why aren't they in AP Calc BC?
Well, and I think just from having had the opportunity to read the course catalogs and the descriptions, they are very different, and they're intentionally different than an AB Calculus course, because they're not so content-specific. When you read it, it really is about an integration of skills and knowledge, as opposed to more something that is really technical, technically a skills course. So, and, and I think that's just something that as a community, as you were saying, is as families come up through this, that's going to be a larger learning for everybody in our community to get to, which does take me back to, if we could go, Dr. Murray, to the, to the programs, diploma designations, and concentrations page. I think this is a great document. What the document doesn't say explicitly, but I know you all have said explicitly in meetings, and I think it is very valuable to repeat it out loud here, is that this does not mean, at the high school, you have only two programs of study.
Right, correct.
So please, Dr. Murray, if you could speak to that.
Yes.
Loud and clear for the people in the back of the room who might not be able to hear you.
Yes, there are a lot of options, a lot of different courses, and students can really build their own program for whatever suits their interests and their, and level of challenge that they're looking for. While these are specific, what we're calling programs, these to the Academy and IB, that is, that is not the end-all, be-all in terms of a program. We also want to create an academic program for students that really fits and suits their needs best. And so that's why we have such a wide range of courses within our, within our course catalog, and, and students can really put together the coursework that best fits them.
Because I know, Mr. Hart, you said this, but you may want to say it again for the people in the back of the room, are AP courses, what has happened to those as we now have two programs?
The AP courses are still there. As I mentioned, there are only, the only AP courses that will be phased out as a result of IB are the AP Spanish, AP French, and AP Latin, right? Those are the only ones. All other AP courses are there, they're not going anywhere, even in looking through the initial course requests from this week. And this is actually slightly new, because we were going through this process of having students do a, what we're calling a draft of their schedule, so it's earlier this year. Usually, we didn't have course tallies until around April, so we have a rough set of course tallies by the end of this week, and those AP courses are still, they're still requested. You know, so they're not going anywhere, and, and it will be interesting to see over time, you might have one less section of AP and one more section of IB, but the AP courses are not going anywhere.
And what about for our students who seek a more traditional, more rote learning experience? Or are students who need more supports? Or are students who are interested in perhaps exploring culinary arts, or electrical, or automotive art? Where did those students fit in? Because this sheet doesn't speak to that directly under the programs. So we want to make sure, for, again, for those in the back of the room, where are those students as we look and think about our high school?
Sure. And so if you go to the bottom of the second page, we have an area called, that we talk about as Academic Concentrations, within the arts, within science research, within engineering and computer science. There are different pathways within that, that a student could take. But if you look at the far right, we have Career and Technical Education, CTE. We do have students who, you know, as 10th graders are saying, I'm not sure if college is where I want to go. And, and that's, that's an important conversation for us to engage with those students. And so we are, we have at this point, over 10 students who are heading over to BOSI's and doing, you know, career and technical education, whether it's in culinary, whether it's in auto mechanics. I mean, we've had, we have students doing cosmetology. So there's, there's options for those students, and I think I'll echo what Dr. Murray said. What's exciting in looking at this, and I'll say it loud and clear, it's not just two programs, it's not just three diploma designations. If you open up that catalog, there are over 100 courses that are offered to students at Rye High School, and there's just so many options. I mean, it can be overwhelming to look at. So I, I think it's nice that the catalog's out. I think it's nice that the students are doing these requests early, because it gives their thinking about it. they're thinking about it, so they can go home and sit down with their parents, read through the catalog, maybe rethink some of those course selections that they made in their, their draft. And by the time they sit down with their counselor in their course request meeting with their school counselor, where the hope is that they're ready to go to make those final course selections.
Thank you. Other, yeah, please.
Going to the slide with the six groupings. If I'm reading this correctly, for an 11th and 12th grade student that is in the IB program, if there are eight periods in their day, does that mean that they do still have a choice to have some electives? Or if you enter into the IB program, is, are you set with just IB courses over your 11th and 12th grade years?
So it would depend on the course selections and some, I mean, when you're, when you're talking about a diploma program student, and I've sat with many of them and done individual skit, like mock schedules with them, depending on their course selections, you might have one free period for your choosing, if you want to do an elective. So I know one student said that they want to fill that with AP Physics. But again, it really is dependent on the different course options that, that a diploma program student would choose.
Okay, but it is, it's a possibility. If you have your heart set on AP Physics, or something that's outside the IB program, it is possible to get that. And then a question I've been asked a few times, are there added points to the classes for IB? Is it like AP? Do you get...
It's the same weighting as five points.
The same weighting, it's five points, like AP classes. Okay, thank you.
I think I just want to, something that you said, Mr. Bloom, really stuck with me, and, or maybe it was Mr. Hart, I can't remember one of you. That, that the way that the IB is set up is that there are no prerequisites. So students who are, who have taken a Regents class, 9th and 10th grade, this is absolutely an option for those students. Or any of the other areas, you know, that we've talked about, the Academy, or if that's the right fit, or a combination of things. And I think that, just targeting back to some of the student feedback that we heard during Curriculum Council, you know, one of the, one of the questions was for kids who are, you know, they want to challenge themselves a little, but they maybe don't want to go whole hog, like, this is such a wonderful option to have available for those students who, who aren't maybe ready to be jumping fully into, you know, the diploma program, but really want to have that more expanded view and, and the skills that they're going to get from taking one of these courses. So I just, you know, I think that, that has been a challenge that we've talked about a lot, is like, for the, for the students who maybe don't need, don't need a ton of support, but aren't the ones that are dying to, you know, push themselves, like, I was not a kid who was taking five AP courses, I just wasn't. But, you know, to have the option to, to stretch yourself a little bit and, and get outside your comfort zone, but not too far, so that you can then do that more, maybe as you, you know, grow and, and develop and move on.
Yeah, I think the optionality of the high school from top to bottom is really exciting to see, because our school is full of diverse learners. And the more opportunities that we can create for learners on all ends of the spectrum, the better our school becomes, and the better our school community is, and the better the Rye community is. And so, again, this is a wonderful presentation. You guys have really come a long way since September, and it's great to see. And I will just say, having a student who is in the throes of making these decisions directly related to this, your communication to the students is paying off. Because in the conversations I'm having, there is definitely a reflection of what you've said that's been heard and is coming back and being repeated at home. And I think that's, you know, the best thing you could get. So congratulations to that. I don't think it happens with the things that I say. So I'm just, you know, you should really feel good.
It's great to hear.
But thank you. This is a really great presentation. Thank you all very much. Okay, so we will now moving on to hearing of the public on non-agenda items. And unfortunately, we have no public to hear from, so we will...
Although, if I could just interject, we did have someone from the public here who had to leave. Congressman George Latimer was in the audience a moment ago. And he did send me a message that he was here to thank the board and the school district for hosting his ceremonial inauguration this Sunday, but he did have to move on to another engagement. So he said he'd try and come back another time.
Well, Congressman Latimer, if you're listening, you are welcome back anytime, and we would love to have you for some hearing of the public on non-agenda items. So seeing that there are none for that this evening, though, we will move on to the consent agenda. So can I please have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Sean Clapper, seconded by Matt Shipmanoff. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional. Consent agenda classified. And consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. And consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment. Okay, seeing no questions, all those in favor of approving this evening's consent agenda? That would be seven to nothing. So on this evening's consent agenda, we are authorizing the ROC to negotiate and approve Ed Law 2D compliant contracts, which is an opportunity to help the district with efficiency and better negotiating power as it relates to the work of our Ed Law 2D contracts. So we are thankful for that. We also are approving a contract with Vision Hotels for our high school ASL students to take a field trip into Rochester to be able to see and use their ASL skills in an educational setting, which is a great opportunity for those students. The Rye Fund for Education is making, we are accepting their donation, which goes towards the purchase and installation of a scoreboard for the girls' softball field, which is very exciting. And this is a joint effort, from what I understand, that the Rye Softball Association and the Rye Fund for Education are working together to provide the funds for this. And so I'm assuming the target is for the spring season?
Yes.
New field, new softball scoreboard? It's going to be the place to be. Can't wait to go catch a game. Wonderful. Very exciting. Ah, but it'll be here all week, folks. We also have the hiring of our new athletic trainer, which is very exciting. We welcome our new athletic trainer, and we say, you're going to be very busy when you get started, and so we're happy to have you here. We also have an agreement with Elizabeth Mira Consulting for professional learning for our middle and high school student, or high school teachers, rather, related to our next generation science standards, which are coming down the pike and rolling all the way through. And so that's great to be able to support our teachers in that way. We also have some retirements this evening. So we will start with retirements of our teachers. So it is with sadness that I announce the retirement of longtime Rye High School physical education teacher and coach, Jeanne Romano, at the end of June after 36 years in the Rye City School District and 39 years in teaching overall. Ms. Romano first came to Rye in 1984 as a substitute teacher. She returned in 1988 as a full-time physical education teacher at the high school, middle school, and elementary school. During the 1993-94 school year, she spent a semester teaching 3rd grade at Osborne School as a maternity leave teacher. In 1994, she was appointed as a three-year probationary elementary teacher, teaching 2nd and 3rd grades at Osborne. In 2002, she resigned from her position as a 2nd grade teacher and became a .5 physical education teacher at Osborne. She increased to .7 in 2003, and then .8 in 2005, and then became a full-time PE teacher at both Osborne and Milton Schools in 2007. In 2017, Ms. Romano moved to the high school after 28 years at Osborne School. Ms. Romano has served as the department coordinator for pre, for PE for K to 12 for the past three years. In addition to teaching PE, Ms. Romano was a prolific coach, beginning as an assistant to the field hockey program in 2008. She later served as the middle school girls' modified lacrosse coach from 2016 to present, the middle school girls' modified soccer coach from 2016 to present, and the modified middle school girls' volleyball coach from 2021 to 2022. And from 2021 to present, she became the JV girls' squash coach. Ms. Romano was the advisor of the LETS club at Rye High School from 2018 to 2021, and served as the advisor to the high school Leos Club from 2021 until the present. Prior to coming to Rye, Ms. Romano taught physical education at Rye Country Day School for two years. Ms. Romano has a BA in physical education from Springfield College and an MAT from Manhattanville College. She is a graduate of Midland, Rye Middle School, and Rye High School, and she met her lovely husband, Pat, in high school. Real Rye love story. Rye City School District Director of Athletics, Susan Reed-Dulay, said of her, Maya Angelou's quote describes the impact of Jeanne. "I've learned that people will forget what you've said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. Jeanne Romano makes all, makes all of those around her better. Her unwavering commitment and passion have left a lasting impact. We are inspired by her example, and we strive to honor it as we move forward. We will never forget the way she made everyone feel valued and appreciated." In her retirement letter, Ms. Romano said, "Being a Rye garnet is truly something special. I have made many wonderful memories and friendships with faculty, staff, administration, students, and families. I know that will last a lifetime. I would just like to say thank you for allowing me to be part of this wonderful community and for, and for supporting me along the way." Ms. Romano, we thank you for being part of this community, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. We are also accepting the retirement of Ms. Mary Henwood. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of longtime Rye High School physical education teacher and coach, Mary Henwood, at the end of June after 39 years in the Rye City School District. Ms. Hen, as she is known to her students, first came to Rye in 1986 as a physical education teacher at the high school immediately upon graduating from Hofstra. In addition to teaching, Ms. Henwood was also a prolific coach. She was the head coach of the Rye High School Girls' varsity basketball team for 25 years, from 1986 to 2012, racking up 10 league championships. In addition, she coached JV tennis for the 2009-2010 seasons. She also coached at the middle school. She coached modified girls' lacrosse from 2008 to 2025, and was the modified girls' soccer head coach from 2016 to 2025. Ms. Henwood has a BS in education with a major in physical education from Hofstra University. She is a graduate of East Chester High School. Ms. Henwood was an accomplished athlete while at Hofstra, playing on the NCAA Division One basketball team for four years and acting as a captain her senior year. A thousand-point scorer at Hofstra, she was modest about her accomplishments. Former Rye City School District Athletic Director, Rob Castagna, worked with her for 10 years before he learned of her record. She was also on the NCAA Division One, Division One Women's Lacrosse Team for two years and served as captain her senior year. She also played on the Women's National Lacrosse Team for a year. Rye City School District Director Athletics, Susan Reed-Dulay, said of her, "Mary has had such an impact on so many children and families through her almost four decades of teaching and coaching. Her contributions to the incredible sense of community here in Rye are striking. She will be greatly missed." In her retirement letter, Ms. Henwood said, "I've been inspired by my students, my student athletes, and the dedicated teachers that surround me. I was blessed to do what you love, and you will never work a day in your life." Ms. Henwood, we thank you for all that you have done, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. We are also, I got to take a sip of water, sorry. I got two more. Sorry. It is with, we are also accepting the retirement this evening of Ms. Michelle Yu Sai. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of Rye Middle School Special Education Teacher, Michelle Yu Sai, at the end of June after 31 years in the Rye City School District and 33 years in teaching overall. Ms. Yu Sai came to Rye in 1994 as a .6 part-time special education teacher assigned to the middle school. She became a full-time employee in 1995. In addition to teaching, Ms. Yu Sai worked to develop IEPs and assisted with after-school instruction. She also taught ASL for the 2015-16 school year at the middle school. Prior to coming to Rye, Ms. Yu Sai taught special education for two years in the Walton Central School District in Walton, New York. Ms. Yu Sai has a BS in special education from SUNY Plattsburgh. Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services and Special Education, Dr. Aaron Friedenberg, said of her, "Ms. Yu Sai has shown patience, compassion, and commitment to the students she has worked with over the years. Her work has touched the lives of students, families, and colleagues who have been lucky to have had the opportunity to get to know her. We thank her for her dedication, and as she begins this new chapter of life, hope that she will find as much joy and fulfillment as she has given to others." In her retirement letter, Ms. Yu Sai said, "I want to express my deepest gratitude to the administration, faculty, staff, students, and parents of Rye Middle School for their unwavering support and cooperation through my tenure. It has been an honor and privilege to be part of this educational community, and I will always cherish the memories and experiences gained during my time here. Ms. Yu Sai, I'm sure all of your students will also cherish the memories that you have, that they have of you, and we wish you all of the best in your retirement." And we are also accepting the retirement this evening of Ms. Janine Davy. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of Osborne School Teaching Assistant, Janine Davy, on March 1st, after 17 years in the Rye City School District and all of them at Osborne School. Ms. Davy came to Rye in 2008 as a teacher aide at Osborne. In 2017, she became a special education aide. In 2024, she returned to being a general education teaching aide. For many years, she served as an SAT, PSAT proctor at the high school and assisted with before and after-school activities at Osborne. Prior to coming to Rye, Ms. Davy worked with the New York Telephone Company, later NineX, as a telecom representative and then as a systems analyst. Ms. Davy has a Bachelor's of Business Administration and Management Information Systems from Pace University. Osborne School Principal Angela Garcia said of her, "Janine Davy has been an invaluable member of our school community. She consistently went above and beyond in her teaching, in her job responsibilities, always prioritizing the safety and well-being of our students. Her dedication and positive attitude made her a cherished colleague and friend to all. Ms. Davy, we thank you so much, and we wish you all the best in your retirement." And that is the end of our retirements this evening. So we will now move on to information and discussion. Oh, the 2025-26 calendar, everyone loves a calendar conversation. Dr. Byrne?
Okay. Thank you very much. We have been working some time on the different calendar drafts for next school year. What I have here are two different options that the board has had a chance to review. There are a few minor differences between the two. The first one shows the students returning to school and beginning classes on Tuesday, September 2nd. That is very similar to the model we had this year. So our teachers would arrive back in August for our two superintendents' conference days, which, which was very much appreciated by our staff and very helpful in organizing the school year this year. But it also gave students a nice chunk of instructional time, uninterrupted instructional time, right out of the gate to really set those critically important routines at the start of the school year. Because as we know, in October and November, things can be a little choppy with the different holidays and, and days off that we have. Similar to this year, in Option 1, there would be a two-week break, the Christmas, New Year's holiday. That is one of the elements that comes to pass when you have students returning on the 2nd. That isn't the same in Option 2. In Option 2, students would return to school on Thursday, the 4th. So instead of teachers coming those last two days in August, teachers would come on the 2nd and 3rd, and students would begin on September 4th. And the big shift you see there is that, that holiday break in December begins on the 24th as opposed to the 22nd. So there isn't that two, two full weeks. Much of the balance of the calendar is very similar, but those were two of the big chunks this year. I did get a lot of feedback from folks throughout the, the fall and into the winter about the two-week... throughout the fall and into the winter about the two-week break this year. I got a lot of positive feedback on that from parents, PO leadership, staff, and we did, even today in a meeting, Dr. Murray and I heard about how great the two days in August for staff were this year, and appreciating that if that's able to happen again next year. So, my recommendation is to move forward with option number one, but obviously, I wanted to share all of this with the board in advance. And then, depending on how you see fit, we could certainly put an option out for adoption at the next board meeting. We did put conference days, parent conference days, superintendent's conference days. We have worked really hard over the last few years to put those on the calendar now, so that when the calendar's adopted, all those dates are known in advance. Certainly any comments, questions, thoughts?
So, I have, well, here, let's see, who else has questions? I always have questions, so that's no surprise. Somebody else can start the fun.
Well, I'm just gonna make the, I'll ask the obvious question, that I think we hear a lot every year, even though it's the same answer every year. The last day of school is determined how?
So, I do not involve my magic eight ball in the last day of school. The last day of school is what's known as Regents Rating Day, which is set by New York State. So, that is the last day in which we have to get grades to the state of New York, and that is not an option. So, I talked about that with many folks in my time, that we cannot move it up earlier. So, if we didn't have the two weeks, we wouldn't be able to end two days earlier. That date is set in stone from the state of New York. And there's a whole exam period for Regents exams that occurs leading into that day.
And at this point, I know there's still lots of work being done on the conversations around what kinds of shifts will happen at the Regents level for assessments and tests versus projects, and all of that is still happening. So, at this point, we don't have any sense of whether or not this day will be, this Regents Rating Day will be impacted by that.
So, all the conversations around the Graduation Measures Project, the Blue Ribbon Commission, they have never once said that Regents exams would go away.
Right.
They have said that they would become optional. So, it could potentially have an impact on that, but they still would have to fit the exam days in, the grading days in, and that's sort of how it's laid out right now and has been, unless something shifted with that. But that's down the road. I believe the first school year where there's any discussion, although this was the recommendation that was delivered to the Board of Regents in November but has not been acted on yet, was the '27-'28 school year, that students in that year would be the first year that if the Board of Regents chooses to follow this recommendation, that they would become optional at that time. But optional meaning there would be something that takes its place, that doesn't yet exist, or that we don't know of yet.
Right.
Well, and most importantly, meaning for '25-'26, the last day of school is set by the state, and there ain't nothing you can do about it.
Right.
And for '26-'27?
Same thing.
Last day is set by the state. We'll talk maybe '27-'28. We got at least two years before that changes.
Somewhat similar, because I sometimes hear comments of, "Can't we get rid of some of these random holidays?" I think your level of discretion on those is equivalent to what we just talked about, but can you confirm that?
So, you know, if someone doesn't celebrate a particular holiday, they are really happy often to suggest that we get rid of that. I had two parent conversations this year, and there are holidays that are federal holidays, there are holidays that are state holidays, and there is only one holiday that is a holiday that the board has made a decision based on community conversations over the last four years, and that was Diwali. And that was first put in the calendar this year. It would not change the last day of school in any way. It could, if we did not have Diwali, we could start school a day later or have a day somewhere else in the calendar where there isn't school. There is a set number of days that we have to work with, and we are right there at that set number of days.
So, instead of taking a random one-off, we are making it an intentional decision to take a day of which we know our communities, members of our community celebrate, and have reached out to the board and to the administration requesting support for this holiday.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so this, it's a tough year, because every month, we've got something off. And I say that in full appreciation and understanding of how difficult it is, and then, which leads me to the question of, the decision and the intentionality of when the conference days are set, what is the thinking that goes into when those days are?
So, with the elementary conferences, it is the midway point between the issuance of report cards. So, it's November, and then report cards come in January. It's then, I believe, elementary is again in April, and then you have the report cards in June. At the middle level, there are three different points. So, the first one is the midway point in the, or close to the end of the marking period in the first one. The second one, it's between the mid-to-the-end point, and these were deliberate decisions made by Mr. D. Giovanni and his leadership team. And the third one is in the third quarter, so that students and families can get plenty of guidance as students move into the fourth quarter. So, they're not randomly chosen. There's a lot of conversation that goes into when these dates are selected. I will one note, we have started the last couple of years putting graduation, high school graduation on the calendar, and because of the way Juneteenth falls in 2026, graduation will be on Thursday, July 18th. So, all of you parents of rising seniors who will be going to graduation, juniors who will be seniors next year.
June.
June.
We're not holding graduation after you retire. No, that's not an option. I understand that you get stressed out with the heat and the fans and the blow up.
June, June 18th, 2026. Thank you.
No, no, June, can't push that out. Okay, yes.
Another fine indicator of why retirement is coming.
Other comments or questions by the board in terms of option one, option two? We will engage in this conversation again. This is one of those ones that kind of gets a second pass. But any clarifying questions that you need as you are taking the information home to ponder and consider? Okay.
The only comment I'll make is that I do agree that having September be a fuller month as much as possible, with, you know, more, close to five-day-a-week, as many five days a week, weeks as we can get, is something that seemed to be impactful this year. I feel like when we've had years where we've started later and then other holidays have fallen, where it's been choppier, it's been, the buildup has been more significant.
Yeah, definitely. We've heard that from parents and teachers about this year's calendar and how powerful that was to start.
Well, I think too, when you think about the impact in the classroom, you're more likely to get high engagement at the start of the year than you are close to a holiday break. So, the idea of taking off that Monday, Tuesday, leading up to the holidays, you're probably gonna have less engaged students that week than you would at the beginning of September where you, so it's really those two days or the flipping of those days. So, something to consider. Okay, wonderful. So, thank you. So, we will see this again at our next meeting for some version of an adoption?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, that means we now move on to information and discussion, 16.02. Ms. Boyle?
So, just before I go into these policies, just as a point of reminder, we did earlier on in the agenda repeal several policies that were, two of which were replaced by one that we also adopted. And then, another that was '76-12, which was a policy that we found last spring to be incorporated already into an existing policy. So, but somehow, we just never ended up taking it off the active policy list. So, I just wanted to point those out to everyone. For tonight, for information and discussion, we have three policies. The first I'll talk about, I'll go a little out of order, is 43-21.10, which is Programs and Services for Parentally Placed Non-Public School Students with Disabilities. We have a series of policies that are specifically addressing special education services and needs. This is, and many of those are required policies. This is not a required policy. However, we felt it was important that it be included in the, in the series, just to make sure that we were covering as many aspects of what questions might be around parentally-placed non-public school students with disabilities. So, that is a brand-new whole policy that we are putting forward. The next two are somewhat related. The first is 2160, which is District School Officer and Employee Code of Ethics. This is a combined, the changes here are combined with a NISBA update, as well as wanting to make sure that we were incorporating and defining what was meant by an employee. When it's, that is actually pointed out in the very first paragraph of this policy, before it just had the blanket statement of employees. So, we wanted to make sure that we were reaching all of the different types of individuals that are now actually employees for us, before, you know, I think our pool of people was a little more limited. So, we've now, because we've expanded out into having various roles that are within the district's employment, we wanted to make sure that those were defined here as well. Also, within here, we've tried to specify a little more around the disclosure of interest in matters before the board, and also if there is a involvement with a charitable organization. These were not as defined prior, so we expanded out some of those descriptions to make sure that we're covering all of the And then, the third is a slight change to school building volunteers, and it really was just to make sure that we are specifying volunteer coaches have to have the proper credentials if they are going to be in a coaching role. So, making sure that that was very explicit as part of that policy. Okay. If there are additional questions, please reach out and get in touch. Otherwise, we will have this on again for our next agenda for additional discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, communications to and from the board, board and district committee updates. I see we had a policy meeting. I'm imagining we've covered most, but just in case there's something out there. Ms. Boyle, any updates?
No, basically, what we just talked about is what we talked about.
Okay, fantastic. Before we come together again, which will be on February 11th, we will hold a technology meeting, which takes place this Thursday. I will attend, and I promise to provide a robust and humorous update at our next meeting. And it looks like we have Curriculum Council and Policy, which will happen the eve or the day after our next board meeting. So, we will look for updates for those in March, because February 11th is our next board meeting, which at time, we will hear the superintendent's proposed budget. How about them apples? It's already time for that. And that will be our one and only board meeting for the month of February. So, anybody who is looking to come and spend some extra time with us in the month of February, you're gonna have to come on the 11th, because otherwise, you won't catch us until March due to the way the holiday falls and the timing of our schedules. So, any other communications to and from the board? Seeing none, may I get a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Somebody needs to go to bed. Ms. Boyle, seconded by Matt Chibinoff, all those in favor, seven to nothing. We will see you on the 11th for our budget presentation. Thank you.